So this is the first meeting of the Real Estate Investors Alliance. I do appreciate the small group that has come together for this first initial meeting. Some of you probably are aware of the free webinar that I started doing this year. I think I did three or four of those. And those went pretty well and we were getting some, some strong interest around the webinars. So really thought maybe the opportunity might be to move in the direction of creating a real estate investment club that would meet a little bit more frequently. To talk about real estate and the current trends we're seeing and the opportunities that are out there and give people an opportunity to ask questions and learn. If they're trying to get into business, or maybe they're already in the business and they want to try to grow. That's what these meetings will become about every Friday at lunchtime. So if you've got a free hour or an available an hour during your lunch break, you can sort of pop into these meetings and pick up some knowledge and, and education insight and be able to ask questions. So. The way I wanted to get started today was just sort of go around and start with some introductions, maybe tell folks a little bit about who you are, why you're here. If you're already in the market, if you are in the market, maybe what are some of the things you're doing? We've got a light crowd here today, so you can spend a little bit more time sort of expounding about who you are, you know, compared to if we had a larger crowd. Benjamin, I think you're sort of new to this circle and community, so maybe I'll start with you and let you just sort of introduce yourself. Looks like you're in a brick treehouse of some, some type.
So I'm actually on my anniversary trip, actually. We went up to, we're staying in a yurt. I'm not sure if you're familiar with those. So it's, it's actually a yurt. But yeah, so that's where I'm at. So.
Where y'all vacationing at?
Up in a small place called Doug, Doug Spur, Virginia.
Okay.
So.
Well, happy anniversary.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, Terry invited me. I've done a few investing, some house flips myself. I'd like to get into, get into a little bit more. I'm also a licensed G C. I mean, Terry, I've been actually talking about teaming up. We've been trying to team up on some projects together. And so he invited me to this meeting and I'm very interested.
Well, thank you for making time, especially considering your, only your, your, your anniversary vacation.
Yes, sir.
Still, still dedicated enough to log in and join us. So I appreciate that. What, what area, work, community or market are you located in?
Winston-Salem, North Carolina area.
Sort of the triad area?
The triad, yes, sir. I, I, I go further out than the triad. But I, my main focus is the triad area right now as we grow.
And then how long have you been in the real estate business?
Since not too long, I think I started working on my first house back in twenty-one.
Very good, very good. Congratulations, man.
But you've been remodeling for years and.
I've been in construction since nineteen ninety-six, so.
So yeah, been, been around it for a long time, but just started getting investing in the last four years or so?
Yes, yes, sir.
Awesome, man. How's it going so far?
I'm good. It could be busier, but I'm really, I, I'm trying to focus, push more for new construction. That's kind of my passion. I'd love to do a lot of new construction if possible. That's where I'm kind of. I'd love to do new construction over here and then house flips and investments, real estate over here. I'd, I'd kind of like to break up with the whole remodeling as far as doing it for myself as a G C. I'd like to focus on new builds and then real estate. It's kind of where I'd like to be.
And then my last question is sort of what, what project size are you typically working on?
I guess it depends. We've, we've had projects as, as little as ten, fifteen thousand. It just depends on, most, most of the time that's just repeat clients or realtors who know me and trust me, you know, I'll, I'll take care of them, but. You know, I, you know, I've got, I'm working on a twenty-eight hundred square foot, three-story addition right now. You know, that's, you know, five, six hundred thousand, you know, and I've got some, I've got a, right now I'm getting ready to hopefully.
That mountain winds getting you.
There, do I?
You're breaking, breaking up quite a bit, that's all. But I, I was more so asking like what, what size, what size investments are you typically working on?
I don't like a private purchase. I like to stay fifty to a hundred and fifty. You know, with some renovation, I don't, I'm not, I haven't really gotten into any of the larger scale purchases.
Okay. No, that's good, man. You'll get there. Antoine, what about you, man? Give us a little introduction.
Good afternoon, everybody. Antoine McLean, M Legacy Properties. I've been in and around real estate for about eight, nine years now. Kind of ran the whole gamut. I started out just as an agent. And now I've moved into, I've been an investor these past years as a landlord and kind of done it all flips, wholesales, just deals that as we can get them. In the past couple of years, we've kind of scaled up into development. So I've got a couple of new construction projects in High Point area now. And then over the next twelve months, we've got some larger scale new construction going on in the Winston area. So just buy, sell, lease any way I can.
So, so Antoine, am I to understand you're mostly doing like a buy and hold strategy or?
Yeah.
And are you, you full-time into the investment business now?
Yes, sir. This is what I do.
Awesome, man. And what, what size deals are you typically out there hunting for?
On the development side, we, we're actively doing single family. So we're talking at about two hundred K or below. And I've got, as we go into the year, we're at about a one and a half to two million range.
In, in terms of cumulative?
Yeah, deal size, you know, you know, ten, twelve unit projects that are, you know, have a construction cost in the two million range and so.
But you, but you mostly want to see things that you can renovate and, and hold. You're, you're not looking to flip is what I'm understanding.
No, both actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're more opportunistic.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, very good. That's good to know. And Terry, go ahead and jump in there, man.
Well, I've, you know, I've, I've been on in several different businesses for quite a few years. I've kind of here in the last few years, kind of came back around to real estate. I used to do it heavily back in the nineties and I focused on my other business for a while. Now I'm, you know, getting to where I don't want to climb ladders and stuff like that anymore. So I'm coming back around to the real estate side and one of the things I want to get into as well is to get into some of the lending aspects of the real estate and maybe for, you know, kind of start small as well and you know, for some of the, maybe a little quicker flips and stuff that people doing and but try to make it more asset-based lending instead of, you know, if it's a deal, do it, you know? Not be so tight structured as some banking systems might be, but and plus, you know, plus buying and holding real estate myself as well, so.
So if I heard you correctly, you're wanting to, to work in to get in like what originating hard money loans?
Yeah, yeah. And, and build, build from there. And, you know, maybe start a little small and then you know, as it builds, then keep doing more and more, so.
So like, but, but literally you would be the one making the loans?
Yes.
On the property. So what, what size loans are you thinking about, you know, getting into?
Probably to start with right now would probably be, you know, fifty to a hundred and twenty-five range. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's more of a starting situation with that. In fact, I've, I've got one thing I'm working on right now with a proper rate for my own self with my bankers that creating me a three hundred K line of credit for myself, you know, at a good interest rate. And so I could probably take that and do some reglending out with that to start with and move from that side as well.
What, and what markets are you going to be targeting?
Probably here in the area where I can feel it and touch it, you know? And, you know, so I can see it. Like I said, I, I'd be looking more of if it makes sense to it. You know, more so than saying, you know, what's your credit and how many, you know, how many have you done in the last three years? You know?
But I mean, but, and, and when you say here in the area, you're, you're meaning the triad.
Triad, triad area.
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to make sure we clarify. Cause I, I know that as we grow this community, my vision and hope is that you know, this Real Estate Investors Alliance is going to grow beyond just the triad, beyond just North Carolina. You know, we are going to put these meetings on YouTube so people can start finding some of the information and be able to learn and, and listen and, and gain knowledge from, from the people that'll be in these, these meetings. But, but my goal is really to sort of align or create a community that will be aligned in purpose and able to invest with a vision. And anyone who knows me know that I'm really big on mindset and understanding how to, how to develop an investor mindset. Understanding the why behind your what and why you're doing the kind of things that you're doing. What are you really out here? What, what's really inspiring you to create the portfolio and build the wealth and pursue the individual freedom that you're pursuing? And so this club or this community is going to, is going to facilitate a lot of that. And I'm pretty excited about it. I mean, you know, obviously we're going to, we're starting off with a small group. But as time sort of goes, I remember when we started our Eat Drink Triad community five years ago, I could barely get a hundred people to, to join our group. You know, now we're at ten thousand and, you know, we're, we're generating a hundred and fifty thousand impressions through Eat Drink Triad on a weekly basis. So I, I know that we have a huge opportunity to expand this and, and be able to grow. This might be a little bit repetitive for some people, probably not for Benjamin, because this is his first opportunity engaging and, and meeting with me. But I've had a twenty-three-year career in commercial real estate. Mostly focused on the investment banking side, so primarily structuring real estate deals, financing them, putting together the capital, raising private equity for real estate. And I've been able to touch a variety of asset classes over the last two decades. Multi-family, retail, office, self-storage, mobile home parks, restaurants, hotels, industrial property, daycare centers. I've, I've worked on probably just about anything you can imagine in the commercial real estate space over the last two decades. And, you know, as I look towards the second half of my career, I feel like I probably have another twenty years in this business. And as I move forward, I'm, I'm really going to be focusing more and more in the private equity space. So I launched my first investment fund about eighteen months ago and, and working to scale and, and grow that and, and make it larger. And also helping some other real estate professionals who want to get into the private equity space. Starting to use the platform that we developed for our fund to also help other people to syndicate funds as well, if, if they want to start raising money and leveraging other people's money to, to do real estate deals. And so thi- this community that I want to create, this sort of Friday lunch hour community is really about networking. It's about sharing information. It's about getting market insight. It's about developing yourself. And it's just about growing and being able to gain knowledge and experience so that you know, whatever your strategy might be. I mean, Terry may have a different strategy from Antoine and Benjamin might be doing something slightly different from Algenon, but we can all learn together, we can all grow together and we can succeed together. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the people that come to these meetings, each one of us probably know at least five other people who are in the real estate business or they want to be in the real estate business. And so this Friday lunch hour becomes a really great opportunity to just invite people who want to ask questions, learn more. It's not a heavy lift or a big commitment. There's no cost to attend. You don't have to become a member. You don't have to join anything. It's just a really low, low, low level way of, low, low access level way of somebody being able to plug into the, the information. So Terry, I appreciate you sharing this with Benjamin and encouraging him to join us and, and be here today. I'm also, before I move too much further, I, I seen Kenneth come on camera here and Kenneth is someone that in, in a former life actually worked with Wharton Gladden, which is the practice that I created and built. And now he is, he's in Atlanta at a firm by the name of Baker Collins. Still working primarily in the residential lending space, but also within commercial real estate as well. And Kenneth has been pretty instrumental and inspiring and encouraging me to do more of the kind of thing that we're doing right now on Zoom, you know, getting into more education and trying to build community around real estate. And so I'm pretty excited about some of the things we, we're working on together. So Ken, if you want, man, just maybe introduce yourself and tell folks who you are.
No, absolutely, man. Thank you for having me. Yeah, many apologies for being a little tardy. I was wrapping up the call. Took a little longer than expected. So yeah, as Algenon stated, my name is Kenneth Thigwayd. I'm a managing partner for Baker Collins and Company. We're based here in Atlanta. We are a commercial mortgage brokerage firm. We finance residential as well as commercial real estate projects. So small balance commercial estate projects all over the country with really a focus on the southeast. On the residential side, we focus on originating single-family rental properties, single-family new construction, single-family renovation projects. And also ground up development projects. On the commercial side, small balance, we tend to focus on multi-family, multi-tenant retail. We'll also consider other asset types, primarily debt providers. Every now and then, if we have a very strong, a very astute, very experienced borrower, developer, operator, we'll consider injecting some, we'll get one of our capital partners to inject equity in there. So I'm super, you know, excited to kind of be a part of the launch of this program as far as this lunch meeting. So Algenon, I've known this guy for the last almost fifteen years now. He is definitely one of the folks in this space that really understands this market. He's a practitioner more than he is a, he's also a teacher. So I'm just excited to kind of get some more information and about this space and really looking forward to seeing this community grow as I know it will be, as I know it can.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Kenneth. I, I, I know that I talked to several people throughout this week who wanted to be here this Friday, but various, you know, people have different things going on with their schedules. So I do think as we start to host these meetings more consistently and people know that every Friday we're going to be here, you'll get more and more people to, to, to join us. And, and then like anything else, I, I've talked to Kenneth about the idea that as the community grows, we, we will do some live events, some, some things that actually bring people together in person and physically. We just want to first focus on growing the community and getting some consistency out of attendance. But Kenneth has some really good ideas about bringing people together. I've got some good ideas. But we, we think we can bring folks together around specialized training and networking and all types of fun things that just put like-minded people in the same room. So that hopefully not only are you learning and, and gaining education and knowledge through this process, but I, I want to see some of you all do deals together. You know, I want to see Antoine partnering with Benjamin and I want to see Kenneth working with, with Terry. So you know, I, I want to see that kind of joint venturing starting to happen within the process too. I think that's fun. When people can connect and not only grow together mentally, but, but also start to grow wealth together. I, I think, and, and within the real estate space over my last two decades, I will tell you the people that I know who are making the most amount of money, who are really creating wealth, who are really doing well in this business. It's because they partner. I mean, within the commercial real estate space, you're, you're talking about transactions that can get up to, you know, multi-millions of dollars. I mean, I did a hundred million dollars in placements last year, primarily with a group called Bloomfield Capital out of Michigan. But you, you know, their managing director was someone that I've known for fifteen, twenty years. So without that relationship, it would have been much harder for me to do that level of placement last year. So joint venturing, building relationships, that is the, the most powerful way to really gain steam in this business and, and be able to take on some of the larger, larger assets. Before I move on, because we do have a small group, I can be a little more intimate with y'all, which I'm, I actually appreciate considering this is our first meeting. I've talked a little bit about some of the things that I would like to bring to the group on Fridays. Kenneth is also going to help me moderate these meetings on Fridays. So if I'm not able to be here on a Friday, Kenneth may jump in and moderate a conversation. I've also talked to some other people who are interested in, in coming on Kenneth as well as moderators and we'll sort of make sure everybody gets introduced on that. But what are some other things that you think I could cover? Some other things I could be thinking about that maybe you're curious about or you just want to learn more about and you, you, you know, we can bring that to the group on a Friday. And any ideas or any, anything I can take back to the group or some notes I can jot down or?
Well, you know, Algenon for myself, when I, you know, when I first got into doing some real estate stuff, of course, you know, I spent probably ten, ten to fifteen grand going to all these real estate seminars and, you know, carton sheets, books and everything else and but, you know, I didn't know what accountant to use. I didn't know what attorney to use. I didn't know what kind of real estate documents to use. I didn't know none of that. All that information that I was learning, I had no clue what to do with it.
Yeah, and I, I see that quite a bit. And, you know, Terry just went through my, we, I do offer a twelve-week sort of advanced course and, and, and each week is a module that teaches you more about how to analyze the real estate market. How do you analyze property? How do you negotiate deals? How do you put your financing in place? So there's a lot of things that we cover. That's, that's sort of advanced education within that course. But I, I do think, Terry, part of what, what I, I believe will occur is with some of the speakers that I'm going to be bringing in, that, that's where you'll definitely get some of that real world knowledge and maybe a little bit of insight on application. Because I do agree, Kenneth and I've had these conversations countless times. There, there is a tremendous amount of information and resources and books and websites and conferences and Instagram pages and YouTube channels. I mean, there, there, there's not a lack of content available related to real estate or, or even commercial real estate. There's a ton of content. You could go spend this whole upcoming weekend at Barnes and Nobles and you, you, you wouldn't get through twenty percent of the books that are available. I, I think where the disconnect happens and Kenneth, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe where the disconnect happens is people taking the content and the information, but they don't understand the application. Because the books aren't really designed to show you how to apply it as much as it's just designed to, to feed you with the information. To be honest with you, you could go on ChatGPT right now and ask ChatGPT any question. And every piece of information you need to know is going to be there. But I, I think that when you actually get in the business, whether it's on the residential side or commercial, it's the application that'll hold you up because you can read it in a book, but then when you're actually sitting across the table from someone and it's time to negotiate the deal, it may not go the way that it went in the book, or there might be some things that come in. You know, I, I was sitting with a I, I went and looked at several properties yesterday. And I've already started posting about some in our Facebook group. So if you're not in the Facebook group, please join that. But I, I, I started posting about some of the buildings I'm looking at. And I haven't posted this building yet, but, but I got into a negotiation yesterday with a seller. And you, you know, the seller was throwing me a lot of different curveballs because they bought the property at one, at one price and they're turning around trying to flip it. So they want to go to premium and there's all these variables and things swinging around with the deal. So if you, if you don't have real world knowledge, real world experience, you get into a negotiation with a guy like that and you, you're not going to know what to do. So I, I, I think that what I'm attempting to do is help people to understand how to apply these theories and these strategies and concepts so that they can actually go out there and be successful. And I, I feel like in this weekly class, we're going to achieve some of that. I want to be completely honest and transparent here. I mean, this weekly class is for, is for sixty minutes. So you're not going to learn everything you need to know in sixty minutes. It took me twenty-three years to learn this. You, you will not learn it in sixty minutes. But if you keep coming and chipping away at it, I think you slowly, but over time, you pick up more foundational knowledge, you pick up more application and you, you're just, it's, it's like you're going to grow over time if you commit to the process. And then for some folks that when they are ready, and I'm, I'm not trying to push this on anyone. When you're ready to go to the next level, when you're ready to go to that, that is one thing to be in boot camp. But when you're ready to get that Navy SEAL training, then, then come on and enroll in my twelve-week course. And you, you know, we'll take your skill set to an entirely different level. But I mean, am I accurate on that, Kenneth? I mean, you want to chime in?
I think you're spot on there. So one of the differences in Terry, I'll, I'll be, I, I, you, you echoed my sentiments. When I got into real estate about twenty years ago, I felt the same way. Like where do you go? There's so much information. There's so much content. What do you use? What template are you using? Are you using the right one? Which conference should you go to? Who should you meet? There's just like so many variables in this, like the, the fear of the unknown. So I totally understand that. But to Algenon's point, one of the differences that this particular program provides or this community provides is you're dealing with someone who's a practitioner. And so whenever I want to kind of learn from someone about a real estate tat, strategy or, you know, a transaction, I really want to understand. My very first question is, how long have you been doing this and have you been successful doing this for that amount of time? And so many times they will sit here and give you, if they can, if they, if they give you a straightforward answer and they tell you, hey, look, I've done X, Y, Z, I've been in this place, that's the person I want to go to. If you ask that same question, they start sounding like a politician. Well, you know, it's about X, Y, Z and you know, that's the person you want to be very careful about. And so this is the stuff that we deal with quite a bit. We have a lot of folks who will come into this space. They're all over the place. They don't know what they want to do. They haven't really created a strategy. They don't really, they know they want to be in real estate, but they don't know exactly what, 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 what role they want to play or what direction they want to go. And that's one of the things that we love about doing that is just really creating a role and also just making certain that people really understand what they're doing. And making certain that the information that you're receiving is coming from someone who's actually done it before and not someone who's just theorizing about it.
Yeah, because it's, it's easy to, to come up with a lot of theoretical ideas. It's, it's much more difficult to go put them in practice. And so I want to help you understand how to put it in practice. I, I want to see, I want to see you guys grow. I, I, I think we just wrapped up the twelve-week course that Terry was in. We, we wrapped up a week ago. And the, the thing that I most enjoyed about that entire experience was just watching the growth that they had over that twelve-week period, watching where they started week one and the questions they had. And then seeing where they landed in week twelve and just the basic, you know, the knowledge and understanding that they gained. And then hopefully, I'm, I'm hopeful that Terry and all his peers in that, that cohort are going out and continuing to feed upon that, like continuing to do more to grow. I mean, because obviously I can't do everything for you, but as I've offered Terry and, and that entire group, I'll always be here as a resource and, you know, someone you can come back and ask questions to. So Kenneth, I appreciate you offering that. And then Terry, yeah, I, I do think this, this weekly group will start to address some of that. And I, and I, I think to wrap up on your question or your commentary, I think the biggest thing too that, that I've learned is just having, having a place that you can go and ask questions makes a huge difference because you might read it in a book, you might see an article on the internet. You might have a conversation with a buddy and they tell you something. But then having a place where you can actually go and vet the idea, vet the strategy, ask questions. A lot of times that helps you out tremendously, just having a sounding board. And I think these weekly meetings will be that opportunity for you i- is to just come here and ask questions and, and get not only my response, but the response of the group. And, you know, as we grow the community, different people will have different experiences and you might get different types of responses. And I, I, I think that's going to be fun. Benjamin, Antoine, anything that you guys think we should be thinking about or that we're, we're not mentioning or, or just things that maybe you want to hear about on, on Fridays?
Yeah, I was, can you hear me?
I can, yes, sir.
Okay. One thing I was thinking about, I don't even know if this is possible, but as a builder, I'd love to be able to partner with somebody and be like a one-stop shop. And be, and I'm not sure if that's even possible to do, but that's something that I could set apart for builders and say, you know, and it would part, I could partner with somebody and get them business and I don't know, that's just something I was thinking about.
So, so Benjamin, I heard one-stop shop, but then you cut out. So I didn't get that last part, but one-stop shop for what now?
To be able to, not only as the builder, but offer financing. So partner with, partner with somebody and basically I'd approach a client and say, hey, I, I, I can build your house and I can get you financed. Or I can finance you or whatever, whatever that would look like. I don't know. It was just a thought.
No, no, I, 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 I think you're speaking Kenneth, Kenneth's language right now. That's the kind of thing he wants to be able to do with you. Trust me. Is, is be able to come in and provide you some financing and that kind of support on different transactions you're working on. I, you know, I also do financing, but mu- much different than Kenneth. I, I don't do really any single-family financing. It's all primarily commercial real estate and you know, typically the minimum for me, I'm, I'm normally looking to be at a minute, at a, at a million minimum and, and then going higher from there. Kenneth plays in a much broader space than I do. But I, I think between, you know, he and I, we could be helpful to you, but also I don't want to just make. But also I don't want to just make it about he and I either because you, you, you know, we, we want to create a community where people feel like they can grow in whatever area they want to grow in. So um, I know in May, one of my guest speakers is gonna be Chad Davis from um, um, First Horizon Bank. So we're, we're gonna have those kind of speakers coming in once a week where you'll get, you'll, you'll hear about other kind of lending programs and lending opportunities and be able to follow up with those people. Um, so yeah, I do have Chad coming next month from First Horizon to talk about lending. And I'll get more people that, that'll come in and talk about lending and different programs that are available. But I think Benjamin, you're, you're right. I think you'll be able to discover that connection, whether it's somebody like Kenneth or someone else in the group, you know, o- over some period of time.
Okay.
Go, go right ahead, Antoine. It's on you.
Uh, I think you guys are spot on um, with what you're mentioning. I know for me as a, as an active investor out here, I'd love a place to come to uh, bring maybe a deal of the day and have, you know, other active investors look at what, what I've got going and maybe concede spots I missed, opportunities I may have missed in an active, you know, real life deal that's going on or have, you know, guys with church level of experience and knowledge kind of look at things that, that I'm doing and say, hey, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? Uh, that'd be great to see uh, in this group.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely gonna have that piece of it, Antoine. I, I, I think that's, that's a great way for people to learn um, by, by, by watching what other people are working on. But I also think that enhances the networking experience too, be- because you, you may be working on a deal where you need a contractor and Benjamin says, wow, I, I can help you. Or you might be, or you may need an investor and I might say, hey, man, I want to partner with you on that. So I, I, I think we will have that. I, I think while the group is small, it's gonna be easier to do that, right? Because we'll have more time for people to go around and say things. But as the community grows larger, I could envision us, you know, let's say Antoine, this particular week, you've got a deal that you want to share. So we, we get in touch with you in advance, we'll put you on the agenda, give you ten minutes or whatever for you to talk about your deal. And then the next week it might be someone else that gets a chance to talk about their deal and we, we could sort of do that on a rotating basis, week to week. I, I think we could do it in that format once the community grows larger. But you know, while we have a tight knit community like this, we'd have plenty of time to go around and, and actually give you know, everybody a chance to, you know, ten minutes or so to sort of talk about what they're working on. And I, I know for me, it, you know, sometimes by, by me just listening to somebody have a conversation, I'll learn by just listening, you know, by, you know, you're talking to Kenneth about your deal, but I'll learn from that. And I think the, the rest of the group will, will learn from that as well. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely work that into the, the space as well. Um, you heard me mention a moment ago, we will have some guest speakers coming up. Um, I know next week we'll have Ramon Lamelli. Um, Ramon is a local Realtor. He works with a lot of folks that do um, renovations and fix and flips and all types of things. He, he's a, he's a successful Realtor. He's also an investor with my investment fund and, and, and also just a personal friend. So Ramon's gonna come in next week and, and, and speak with us. Um, the week after I will have Nathan Jones from Triangle Appraisal Group. So he's gonna come in and help us understand what's going on with the market and comps and vacancies and, you know, all, all of a sudden, a lot of people are getting higher property tax bills right now. So Nathan's gonna speak to um, some of what he's seeing out in the marketplace. That'll be the week after next. And then coming in May, I'll have um, Sandy Eichner. Sandy Eichner is um, she's a, she's a dynamic real estate agent. I've actually known her for close to twenty years. She does a lot of deals down and around Charlotte and Lake Norman and out to the coast and down in South Carolina around Myrtle Beach and Hilton Head. Um, she's a top notch real estate professional. She's hurt, she's held some leadership positions within the real, real estate organization um, and just, just has a tremendous amount of energy. You, you will definitely enjoy meeting this young lady. Um, and she's someone that just comes across a lot of deals. I, I mean, she really does. I mean, she just really comes across a lot of activity. So she'll be coming to visit with us in May and then along with Chad Davis. And then like anything else, i- i- you know, don't just count on me to always come up with the topic and the speaker and all this kind of stuff. So it's like, hey, if there's things that you want to hear about, if there are people that you're wanting to connect with, maybe there was a project you read about in the Business Journal, maybe there was something you saw while you were riding around. You know, relay that information to me. I will do the best I can to, to try to secure a speaker to come talk about whatever it is that you're asking about. So um, we do have the next few weeks sort of lined up and of course you'll get reminders and emails and all that kind of fun stuff reminding you to be here with us on Friday. But the biggest thing is just keep in mind, this meeting is every Friday at noon. You, you don't have to come every Friday, but you could just put it on your calendar every Friday at noon. And I, I think I'm gonna even try to keep it so it's the same Zoom link every time. So that you, you know, it's really easy for you to, to, to be able to pop in here. And then, you know, after the conversations, I'll send this video over to Delaney, my assistant, and she'll get it packaged and upload it to YouTube. And we're, we're gonna create a special playlist on my channel. So you'll go to Algenon Cash, which is my channel. There'll be a playlist there for the Real Estate Investors Alliance and all these meetings will be on that playlist. So that you, if you want to go back and watch them again, you can. If you want to share them with people in your community or your sphere of influence, you'll, you'll be able to do that as well. Um, if you are on LinkedIn, I would love for you to join our group. Um, just all, all you need to do is search uh, Real Estate Investors Alliance. I think there's just slightly over two, two hundred people that have joined so far, which, which is great. I appreciate that. Uh, but would, would love to have you in that group and I would love for you to be active. I, I, you, you know, right now I'm the one that's posting and I'll keep posting till other people start posting. But I, I would love for you to post and ask questions and share deals and the whole thing. And then we also have the same identical group on Facebook. If you happen to be more of a Facebooker versus a LinkedIn person, um, same name, same logo and everything, just look for it. Both groups are private, so you just request a um, um, a, a, to, to join, just request to join. And when one of us see it, we'll, we'll make sure we approve that. Um, again, to repeat, all the videos on YouTube won't be under the Ria name. It'll be on my channel, but it'll be a Ria playlist on my channel. So certainly, um, you know, go subscribe to that if, if, if you're, you're interested. And um, here I've got about fifteen minutes. I wanted to make sure um, I sort of really briefly touch on some current trends that I'm seeing right now and um, then I will wrap up. I'll give us at, at least a good ten minutes to do a Q and A and then we'll, we'll get out of here, make sure we get out on time so you can get back to whatever you got going on today. Um, you know, trend wise, uh, y- y- you know, I really look at all the asset classes. Some of these things might not matter to you. I mean, if you're just focused on single family rentals, then some of the things I'm, I might be getting ready to say may, may, may not matter to you. Um, I think across the asset classes right now, what, what I'm starting to see is apartments definitely still has a lot of strength. Uh, probably has even more strength because of where the high interest rates are right now with single family. Um, I know I was talking to Sandy o- on the phone this, this week and one of the things that she was really complaining about is that they are seeing a slowdown in single family um, home sales. So things are slowing down a little bit. Now I say that and then, you know, Kenneth might chime in and say, Algenon, you're wrong, is speeding up. I mean, you know, I'm sharing you, sharing with you my knowledge based on what I see primarily in North Carolina. So Kenneth might see something different in Atlanta or Georgia. I'll, I'll give him a chance to chime in.
Yeah, I'm seeing the same thing. So we, we work with a ton of Realtors and obviously there's, you know, it's the higher interest rates and of course the tariffs um, or the threat of them um, has really kind of made a lot of uh, folks uh, put their pencils down as far as kind of buying properties here in Atlanta uh, in the metro Atlanta space. Um, so yeah, we're seeing something similar as well. So um, I think she's, she's spot on there.
So I mentioned that because I, I do think apartments are gonna continue to be strong, e- especially in the sense of rent growth. You, you, you're gonna, you probably will see, this would probably blow people's mind, the peo- like the people, Kenneth, know what I mean when I say this. All, all the people that are in the normal world, that are not in the real estate world, um, they, they thought they saw some strong rent growth the last couple of years. You, you, you're getting ready to see probably at least another fifteen, twenty percent rent growth this year. Um, it's, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna go up there. And part of that's being driven by the fact that interest rates are too high, so some people just can't buy. Um, we've seen a slowdown in terms of single family construction because interest rates are too high, construction prices are too high. And with the tariffs coming in, especially on steel and lumber and all these things, we, we know that construction prices are gonna go higher. Um, we also see, as I talk to contractors, one of the things they're really concerned about is obviously with the mass deportations, we are seeing less workers available on job sites. So that's also pushing labor costs up high. So you, you've got this sort of perfect storm coming in where construction prices are going higher, labor prices are going higher, interest rates are high. And so it's gonna really put a big squeeze on, on single family residences, I think, for this year. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure what may happen in twenty twenty-six, but just really trying to navigate twenty twenty-five. But I think apartments is, is still a bright spot. Um, I, I don't think you're gonna see much apartment construction. That's the reason why rent, rental rates are gonna go higher, but I do think you're gonna keep seeing apartments trading hands and, and that's gonna be a healthy sector. I would predict if, I, I feel pretty confident that we are either in a recession right now and the data just doesn't show it yet, or we are definitely heading into one. And if we don't head into a full recession, I think we are at least had, heading into a massive slowdown. So we were predicting economic growth around one point eight, two percent this year. I think that's at least been cut in half. So you, you're gonna see things really sort of get slower here. That's if, if, if you've got access to cash and you want, and you're in the single family residence business, whether you're fixing and flipping or wholesaling or whatever, I do think you're gonna see some opportunities because you're gonna see some price deflation in the single family space. So I think you're getting ready to see a little bit of a correction on prices. You're gonna see a correction, things are gonna come down a little bit, and I do think it's gonna create some opportunity. If, if we go into a slowdown or recession, as I'm predicting, you, you potentially could see some people losing their jobs. Now, this is always hard to talk about because I don't like to prey on people. But at the same time, we are investors and we gotta look at the market and look at the economy as it is, okay? So if we get into a situation where people start losing their jobs, we've already seen that before. These kind of life events start creating opportunities to come in and buy. Because people will want to get off, they'll, they'll want to sell their house, they'll want to, they'll want to downsize, they'll want to make some kind of a change. So the, that's the kind of trend that I'm seeing emerge for twenty twenty-five. A lot of it, quite frankly, if you and I were having this meeting eighty days ago, I, I probably wouldn't have said much of this. But we, we've done some things here in the last eighty days or so. I'm not gonna get political today. But we've done some things here in the last eighty days or so that has put us on the pathway that, that, that I'm describing. So you, you need to be paying, paying close attention. I, I think that industrial property could maybe some-
I, 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 but don't interject, I wanted to kind of talk on unemployment. That's one of the, that's one of the metrics that I'm really uh, focused on. All right, I think right now it's at a four point one percent, but not too long ago is at three point seven percent. So we're still sub five percent. Um, my concern is the rate at which unemployment is moving at. Because it moved up um, significantly over the last, what's that, three, uh, last three quarters. Um, so although we are still sub five percent, it's still four point one, but it just moved a little uh, faster than normal. Wanted to get your take on that because you, you touched on that as far as, are we starting to see that? So when you say that we are, you believe that we're currently in a recession, but obviously the data can't support, they, they will not show that because you, it's, it's, it's a trailing number. So we're waiting to see that, but I wanted to get your thoughts on that as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we are, we are seeing, you know, layoffs jump up quite a bit. I mean, it's just a, I mean, we're just seeing a structural change within the economy itself. And, and I think companies are starting to realign. You, you, you know, um, Jamie Dimon, who is the CEO of JP Morgan Chase, he had a, he does an annual letter. I, I know y'all are probably not nerds like me, so you don't sit by waiting on the annual letter to come out from Jamie Dimon. But um, I, I was waiting, I was waiting to read it and, and I did read it and um, you know, he had some, some real tough, tough commentary about what's going on with the US economy. He also believes that we are in recession. Um, Larry Summers, who's a former Treasury Secretary, he had a great interview on Bloomberg and um, he, he, he obviously talks to a lot of CEOs and, you know, he, he said two thirds of the CEOs that he surveyed believe that we are in recession. I think you're also seeing CEOs, to answer your question, Kenneth, CEOs are pulling back on capital, capital expenses. So that's also leading to some tightness a- around jobs and employment and those kind of things. So it, when, when people wake up and they see their stock market portfolio decline thirty percent, um, and then they get called into the office and they just lost a job. Um, when, when these not, the, when these things start to compile on one or com- combine on one another, people don't go out and spend money as much. They don't, they don't take big vacations. They don't buy as many clothes. They don't go out eating as much. So there's this sort of um, insidious ripple effect that starts to happen. Um, and in our world, we call it contagion. It's called economic contagion. It's, it's when something like the stock market has such a severe shock and disruption that the after effects of it can spill over into the economy and start to really create some, some interesting hazards and, and, and obstacles. And that's what I'm seeing right now is that we, we've, we've let off contagion. And I, I know the president has pulled back on the tariffs and there's been a big, big pause. I'm hopeful that over the next ninety days, we're gonna some kind of way navigate through all this and get back on course. I know there's some economists that think we can, um, but it's, it's gonna be a challenge. Now with all that, y- y- you know, challenges are challenges. If, if you have an investor mindset, you see challenges as a good thing. You don't see them as a bad thing. Challenges create opportunities. Challenges create a chance for you to get into a deal. Don't let the challenges and the economic environment scare you. Don't think like a consumer. So when a consumer sees challenges in the economy, they get terrified. They run in the house, they hide, they put the, they put the blanket over their head. They don't want to do anything. I'm gonna need you to be like an investor. I want you to be looking at the market, looking at the economy and saying, where's the opportunity? Where do I get a chance to, to shine? Now, where I was going with this is I think you're finally, we haven't seen much softness in the industrial sector, but I think you're getting ready to see some softness there. Because if we're, if we go into a recessionary environment, some of these manufacturers and these, these warehouses and these kind of things, they won't be able to manage that. Now, I'll, I'll give you an example. Just last night, uh, just last night, um, Bloomberg had a manufacturer on, and apparently she sources a lot of her products from China. Now imagine this, I'm giving, giving you one example of what's going on here. Imagine you, you bought a, 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 um, you bought inventory from China. Now you made the order two months ago, okay? So you spent a hundred thousand dollars on whatever your inventory order is, okay? Now it takes, you know, it takes about sixty days for, for this stuff to get loaded and get here and arrive and all this kind of stuff. So you've already paid, you already made your order, you already paid your hundred thousand dollars. Now the stuff is arriving. And they're telling you down at Customs Enforcement, oh, hey, Kenneth, we know you already paid a hundred thousand dollars, but we need another hundred and forty-five thousand dollars just to get this stuff off the boat for you. That is what's happening right now today. That is what's going on. So this lady that was on Bloomberg last night, she basically had to shut her business down. That's what she was saying last night. She's already shut it down. She's having to figure out what to do. She's laid her employees off. I just think you're gonna see a little bit more of that as, as we go through the next ninety days and try to navigate and figure out what's going on. I think if you're a retailer, you're in trouble. You, you, you were already in trouble before this, but because of the rush to Amazon and online selling and that kind of stuff. If you're a retailer, you're really in trouble now. And then obviously if you're in the hotel space or hospitality or restaurants or anything like what we call special use, you're, you're very nervous right now too. So there's blood in the water. I can't see inside everybody's bank account who's in the Zoom today. But if you can get your hands on some cash and you can be patient, I think you're gonna see some really interesting buy-in opportunities this year, okay? And then also the, the advice that I'm giving to my clients and my investors to protect yourself through what I believe is getting ready to occur, you need to, you need to have cash. You ma- make sure you have cash and you need to watch your discretionary spending because things are gonna get a little choppy in twenty twenty-five, for sure. But if you can maintain that right mindset, I think this is gonna create a, opportunity for you to buy. It's gonna really create some interesting opportunity.
Yeah, Algenon.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I was gonna say with that said, I, that, that, that concludes my market update. Um, and, and, and um, and Kenneth is laughing because um, I'm not exaggerating, y'all. I probably consume twelve or thirteen hours worth of news every single day. I, I, I read The Economist, I read The New York Times, The Washington Post, some Fox Business, CNBC, Bloomberg, I'm on all of it. And the reason why I'm so voracious when it comes to taking in this information is, one, I want to be successful. Two, I want my clients and my partners to be successful. And three, whenever I interact with you guys, I want to be able to answer your questions. I want to be able to give you some insight and guidance. Now that doesn't mean I'm right. If, if I was right a hundred percent of the time, I wouldn't be on this Zoom. I'd be up there with Jamie Dimon helping him rate, write the next annual letter, right? But, but I, I, I try to keep up to speed on this stuff so I can be a resource to you. Um, and so yeah, if you have questions about what's going on in the market, what you're seeing, the economy, these political announcements- these political announcements, um, certainly want to help you. Go ahead, Terry.
Well, I was just going to mention, uh, you know, well, w- one, I think it'll a lot, you know, we got to give it time to get better. Uh, and, you know, be careful with living in doom and gloom, but just because you hear it. Um, you know, everybody goes and buys all that bread for the s- snowstorms in North Carolina that never show up, but uh, you know, and you mentioned the retail clients. Now, my other business, you know, my clients are the Fortune five hundred companies. And, you know, back in twenty twenty-three, they were spending lots of money. They put stuff on hold for twenty twenty-four and now they're spending it again. So, you know, for for my retail clients, they're speeding up spending money, not slowing down. So for my other business, that's going to be good for me this year. Uh, because I'm I'm already, you know, I just, I just done three orders uh, this week for close to a hundred grand of new spending that they just done. But these are projects that have been put on hold in twenty twenty-three, and now they're going forward with them.
Well, we we are, I'm I'm hopeful that many companies continue to spend be- because everybody won't continue to spend and we we're going to need people to keep, you know, injecting, injecting capital into this this economy that that clearly is definitely going to slow down. But Benjamin, Antoine, you guys have any questions for me? Any thoughts or closing remarks as we get ready to let you get back to your normal life? I know Benjamin's anxious to get back to his anniversary celebration.
Yeah, my my wife's been very patient, so we're we're good. Yeah, we're good. But I appreciate, appreciate what you do, uh, Algenon. And um, thanks for letting me be a part of this group.
Can we count on you guys to be back with us next Friday? Or if you're busy next Friday, that's fine, but just generally, you know, start to put this on your calendar.
Yeah, Ab, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Super informative. Um, I'm looking forward to continuously being a part of this group and in these conversations.
Awesome. Well, make make sure you guys, don't don't keep it all for yourself. Um, you you know, tell a friend, share, share, share it with a friend, tell them what you're learning. Um, and y- y- you know, also, don't be afraid. I I think Terry could probably testify, you know, testify to this, but um, don't be afraid to shoot me a private message. Share, share some thoughts with me, ask questions. Um, give me guidance, give me direction, tell me what you want to hear. Um, you know, re- really, really communicate with me. But I appreciate you guys making time to be here today. I'll see you guys again next Friday. And um, just to reiterate, we'll have Ramon Lamelli with us as a guest speaker. And again, if you're not in the groups on Facebook and LinkedIn, please go search those out. So, thank you all.
A- Algenon, last thing, last thing I think that needs to be said, because I've known you for, you know, quite a while that, you know, maybe Ben and others, I don't know how well they've known you forever, but I just want to say thank you because I know you don't always get to thank you. Everybody just wants to open up and suck suck out your life out of you without saying thank you. But, you know, a- and and you you give without expecting anything back, and I just want to say thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you, man. I I'm I'm going to make sure I I Apple pay you that twenty dollars here this week. Y'all take it easy. Have a good, have a good day. All right.